Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the Litchfield zoning board of adjustment meeting to order at 7:00 PM for May 19. Now, if we can do, we can stand for the pledge allegiance. Do you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then we'll start with the roll call attendance.
Steve Perry, member. John Deveraux, member.
Laurie Gandia, member.
Coach Love Ash, member.
Alright, so we have four, and we may get another one, I'm not sure. So, we're going to move right into our first case, which is case number 20250517. Variance request from LZO Article 1207, lot requirements, section 1207.02, to allow a building within the 75-foot wetland setback. Name of applicant, William and Teresa Chicharini. Location of property, 110 Pinecrest Road, Litchfield, map 14, Lot 7. And who will be presenting? Come on in. Welcome. Sure.
Thanks.
And before you begin, we have a four-member board. You are entitled to a five-member board. And if you, so you have to get three affirmative votes to pass.
Okay.
So sometimes people wait until you have five members.
Okay.
And they will continue it, or they'll proceed with four. So I just want to let you know that you do need three out of the four to be successful.
Okay.
So you have the option of continuing it or moving forward. What would you like to do?
Let's move forward.
Okay. And just state your name and address, and then you can get into your presentation.
Okay. My name is Tracy Cody, and I'm the daughter of William and Teresa Chicharini. And I currently live at 110 Pinecrest Road.
Okay.
They have me listed as their representative.
So you are listed as their representative. Okay. Perfect.
Or whatever the formal title is. Okay. So, do you all have a copy of the applica-?
We received a copy. They don't have it in front of us. So typically what happens is you just kind of give a little bit of a story of what you're trying to do.
Sure.
And then you go into the five points.
Great.
And you just, you can read right from your application, or you can discuss those however you would like to.
Perfect. So, we are looking to add an in-law apartment or an ADU to the current residence for a number of reasons. My husband and I have two young children, and being closer to my parents is helpful for us. And as they continue to age, it will be helpful for them, in a nutshell. So the five points on the application... Do you want me to read, like, the variance will not be contrary to the public?
Yes. Yep. So those are those five criteria.
So, what we've written in the application, it will not be contrary to the public interest for two reasons. It appears that there would be limited impact to the actual function of the setback due to the minor amount of impingement. So what we did is we sketched out a rough estimate of what we want the ADU to be, and it's 24 by 33 feet. And then we measured roughly according to the plot plan how much square footage would actually be infringing on that setback. And the total amount that we were able to come up with is 381.6 square feet. In addition, the view from the street will not be impacted because the ADU is going to be behind the garage. So from the view of the front of the street, you're not going to be able to see it. Also, we'll be sure to match the aesthetic of the house and everything. The second point, related to the spirit of the ordinance, it's observed because of the limited or minimal impact on the actual setback intent. The setback markings, we compared the markings to the current wetlands that exist on the property, and they don't follow what the original plot plan outlines. It was 20 years ago. Obviously, the land has changed quite a bit since then. So when we even measured, we got a tape measure. We tried to get a surveyor to come and couldn't track one down. It's beyond 75 feet at this point. So, the impact, we feel like, won't be significant at all. When we talk about the abutters, the view of the ADU will only be visible to one neighbor. And it, um, his view is right from the backyard. And, um, the other side has a very thick tree line, and we can't see them. So they're not going to be able to see us. The third point, substantial justice is done. Notification of the abutters has occurred. And then we're hoping for review and approval from you guys. We also feel like the impact to the neighboring homes will be positive, given that the increase in value of home that will occur because of the addition and property value increasing with that. Which then goes directly into the fourth point, that the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because the aesthetics will not be impacted, and the value will increase, which will help other homes in the area. In addition, most of the homes on our road in Moose Hollow, which is nearby, are four-bedroom homes. And our current home is a three-bedroom. And then going into 5A, literal enforcement of the ordinance will negatively impact the homeowners and other residents by not allowing the benefit of the multi-generational home to exist. I'm not sure if any of you have kids, but if you do, you probably know the value of having family nearby and how helpful that is. While also having some separate space and not shared kitchens and things like that. In addition, the 5B point, the setbacks for the building is outlined in the plot plan, as I mentioned earlier, appear to not take into account the elevation of the area. I did speak with a potential builder, who I imagine you may be familiar with, David Kidwell. And he recommended that I take some pictures to share. Is that okay if I bring that over to you guys? So this is from the backyard looking in. These two are the same.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I tried to save paper, but you guys can pass these around.
Sure.
So the dark blue chairs have string attached to them that then attaches to the house for where we're going to have the ADU.
That's cool.
So you can kind of see the slope of the land also moves away from the house. And if you look up towards the garage, where we're hoping to add a third bay, it's significantly higher. You may have to swap papers to do that. My dad made the point of, we've never had water in the house. And he mentions the floods of 2006. Even this year, with all the flooding that I know is occurring with people, we've never had an issue with water.
Switch. I'd like to mine to you that way.
Yep.
Sorry. So I think I covered all of the applications.
It's the same as that one.
Questions, but if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer them. This is my first rodeo, so please let me know if I missed something.
My first question, on your application, I thought we were talking about an ADU and a garage. Are there two encroachments? Or is the ADU the only thing that's encroaching? Because I have an ADU and a new garage.
So they're both encroaching, not total feet between the two?
It's a 382 square feet. So the garage is attached to the ADU, the, so?
Nope. So what's going to happen is, right now, we have two, a two-bay garage.
Yep.
The first bay that exists, we're going to change into a shared mudroom, and then add a third bay. So there'll still be a two-car garage, and then that shared mudroom space.
So when you have the two bays behind that, is where the ADU is going to be?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what I'm looking at here, is the back of the garage?
Yep.
Behind here, and that's why we have, that's where the ADU is going to be?
Yes.
You said behind the current two-bay garage?
Correct.
Correct. That's the way it looks over here, so.
But you're adding on a bay, though. So this is going to be bigger, right? It's going to come out a little bit more for the?
The bay will, not the ADU.
Not the ADU.
So the ADU will still come directly back from the current garage that exists. Because the way, if you're, I don't know if you have the plot plan in front of you, but the way the plot plan is, the setback is like diagonal. So as you get closer to the garage, it gets farther away. Are you looking at that, Steve?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why my head's turned.
I figured. I mean, maybe you just sit like that, I don't know.
Yeah. So you do have that.
Yes.
So the, the new garage is 12 feet wide?
Yes. 12 by 24. Yep.
So the angle line, are we open for questions?
Yeah. Absolutely.
The angle line that goes through, I'm going to say, half of the extra-bay garage, and about a third of your ADU. I take it that's the line that's your official setback? Because your original house doesn't touch that.
That's the 75-foot setback.
That's the 75.
Outermost one is the 100 foot for the septic.
Yep. And the other one, the 50 foot, is the non-discovered?
Right.
So it's literally clinging to the corner of the existing house right now?
Right.
Did you see this?
Yep. That's what I'm on right now.
Okay.
So basically, the corner, the back, we'll call it the back-left corner of the ADU, is going to be approximately in between the 50 and 75-foot setback.
I'm glad you have clarifying questions about the lines, too, because it took me a while.
Now, history.
Sure.
There's never been a water problem. Is there water in that area?
No.
There is not?
No. Matt came to visit one day. No water at all.
So is it a runoff area? Or is it a drainage area?
It is when we drain the pool. But otherwise, there's no water there.
Yes. There's a swell down at the end. It takes the runoff coming down the hill and runs the backside of their property to the swell across Pinecrest, out the other side.
Because there's, I've ever seen significant water standing here in the front where, because this is your house, right?
So yeah. So to the left of the garage, there's a stream.
Right.
That's, I'm assuming, the wetlands that they're talking about. But when you walk?
If you're looking at their garage, or at the front of their driveway, where that swell is, it's probably an eight-to-10-foot embankment.
And Steve, just so you know, when you're looking at those three lines, yeah, I think we said, so this is the 75, so it's that back corner.
Yep.
That's going to be pushing in, and the whole?
In the corner of the new garage.
Right.
Yeah. So my kids and I like to play in the backwoods, like, near the brook. And this is the first time, I mean, my parents built the house, however long ago, that I've actually seen running water back there.
Yep.
Otherwise, it's usually just swampy.
Any other questions from the board? And I have the actual file here, if anybody wants to look at it.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
It's going to be sticked out in there. Do you mind giving me one of those to mark these pictures as exhibit one? These two right here. Exhibit one and exhibit two.
We pointed this out before. So your existing shed?
Yes.
Is actually inside of the 50-foot?
Setback. And I think I mentioned that to Matt to check in on. I thought there were other encroachments.
Yeah. So technically, it's, you know?
Not technically, it should be.
Not technically, it shouldn't be there, but.
And that's actually, I don't even know. That's not in the 50, because the 50 not supposed to touch at all. That may be in the 50.
Yeah, it is.
Right. So you're not even supposed to have a yard, technically? I mean, it's your yard, but you're not supposed to be cutting it. You're not supposed to be doing any of that type of stuff to it.
Noted. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just reading through.
Okay. Take it down.
Her reasonings on the, uh, five points.
Sure.
This is pretty cool. I could show you a visual of what they're... That's awesome, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. Because this is existing, right? And that's how they...
So it's like there, this used to be a bay, so it's adding a bay here.
Oh, that's still fine. Yeah.
And this is what the back ADU is going to look like.
Yep.
Pretty cool, huh?
It is pretty.
I love modern technology.
Approximately, how far would you say that brook is from your property, your open backyard property?
We measured it from the corner of the house to where I would step down and get wet. And it was well over, I think we got to like 110 feet.
And I have this that I got off the registry, so you can see like where the brook is, right here. Want to see that?
Yeah.
Look at that.
Picture, too.
This is a brook. Do you mind if I open up to public input while you read, or you need more time?
Sure. Yep. Yep.
Is there anybody here in favor of the application that wishes to speak? There is no one. Is there anybody in opposition to the application that wish to speak? There is no one. Is there anybody here with questions regarding the application? There is nobody here. All right.
She didn't even bring a support group.
He's putting the kids to bed. Oh, and my parents are on a cross-country trip right now, which is why they're not here. My dad was like, "I can call in if needed." I said, "I think, I think I got it, Dad. I think I got it."
Phone a friend, right?
He's probably watching YouTube right now. I texted my mom, and I said, "You guys can watch the meeting if you need to."
There you go. On technology helps us out.
It's a file.
Okay. Sounds good.
This is extra, so.
Did you see all of that? There's some pictures in there.
Yeah. Well, just to make sure I didn't miss anything.
A bit of representation of what's going to get made up.
Is that my dad's mock-up study, though?
I like them.
And you mentioned the dimensions were 24 by 34. Is that just the AD, that's the ADU, right? Going off the back?
Yep. I think it was 24 by 33, but yeah.
33. Okay.
Yeah. The garage is 12 by 24, and the ADU... 24 by 33. Yep.
Anything else on the board to the applicant?
Can I ask Matt a question?
Absolutely.
How does it work that this mudroom area is called shared? Where does the space get delineated to?
So, shared according to the new laws set by the state, it's got to have one shared door. Doesn't matter where it is, doesn't matter what the location is on the structure, one shared door. So the fact that they want to remove one bay and make that a mudroom, it's got to have one interior door that shares the same space.
All right.
So that doesn't come into the ADU, kept the square foot, right?
Correct.
Did that answer your question?
It sure did.
Super. Thanks, Matt.
Good?
I'm good.
Looking up that statue for you.
Did you say that in the application that you cannot put it on the right side? You couldn't put a garage on the right side because of the setback, right? You can't expand?
Septic.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Oh, is septic?
On the other side of the house, is there septic?
The other side of the house.
The front. The septic is in the front, so they?
So the other side of the house is just close to the neighbor's property?
It looks like a 21-foot setback, and that you need 20 feet.
Right. Thanks for bringing that point up.
Yeah. So?
Forgot to mention that.
Yeah. So, what I'm thinking here is, if you had your ADU on the other side?
Right.
Right? You wouldn't have any?
Right.
Wetlands impact, but you'd lose your deck.
And I, but we couldn't do it, right? Because it's so close to the neighbor's yard?
You would, it may require a setback variance instead of a wetland variance.
Got it.
So you could?
Just a different variance.
Different variance, yeah.
With different criteria, I mean, spirit. So the door is just, needs to be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. So it has to be between it.
So we're not assuming what's 1205, whatever. It gives you all the specifics, so I'm curious for any cash can be kept. State's just generic. We can shrink them down, make them, you know, we have to abide by state. That's loose, but we can bring in tender. That's why we have an 800 square foot max on ours, because state right now is 1,000.
Anything else? Would you like to add anything before we close the public hearing?
Thanks for hearing me out.
Anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in theater?
Aye.
All right. So we have the variance to the wetlands. You're more than welcome to sit here.
Okay.
Yep. So you can sit there, you can sit, whatever you want to do. So what's going to happen, just so you know, is we're going to talk about everything. We're going to go through the five criteria.
Got it.
Then we're going to vote.
Got it.
And then you'll vote.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right. So, any questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
Doesn't give me too much heartburn.
I think a good chunk of it is inside the 75-foot setback.
John, any thoughts?
I think, um, I don't, I don't have as much concern about the variance itself, but the construction for that variance, they're going to be right next to the wetlands. So if we were to accept that, we would need to have stipulations for that.
For conditions.
You be careful in that wetlands area and do all the due diligence around there. That would, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Sure. I do have some concerns. I, because I remember going by this property, like, this is flooded. Like, I don't know if you ever remember, you know, anybody drive by the property? So this, like, rock stuff, there's been times I think when that may have been there, it didn't look like that. There's a significant amount of water that's flowing through here, and it's?
It's a runoff.
Well, it's part of a drainage easement.
Yeah.
So the whole front property is a drainage easement. Like, all of this, a big chunk.
It's all runoff, yeah.
All runoff from that brook. So, but there's a lot of water there. It may not be going on their yard, but there's a lot of water flow and stuff happening. And we don't know the exact location of the wetlands. They weren't delineated. I mean, so we're going off a 19, a 2005 plot plan. And we don't know where those boundaries are at all. I mean, typically, wetlands, typically, they tend to grow, not shrink. So I don't know where that would put them. Without that, that makes me obviously a little bit uneasy. But I just know there's a lot of water that's there. It's a brook, so it's not just a, you know, a typical wetland. It's actually a running brook, so I do have concerns with that. And then, what is? The... Spirit of... The spirit of the conservation district, that's section 1200, which is criteria number two, talks about, is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Spirit or purposes and intent that we, as a board, we need to be mindful of. And that's prevent the development of structures and land uses on or around naturally occurring and artificial wetlands, because those structures and land uses may contribute to the pollution of surface and groundwater by sewage of toxic substances. Prevent the destruction of or significant changes to natural and artificial wetlands. These wetlands provide many functions, such as flood protection, groundwater recharge, pollution abatement, water storage. Protect unique and ecologically sensitive and unusual natural areas. Protect wildlife habitats, wildlife corridors, and maintain ecological balances. Protect potential water supplies and existing aquifers, water-bearing stratum and aquifer recharge areas. Prevent the expenditure of administrable funds of providing and maintaining essential services, and encourage those low-intensity uses that can be harmoniously and appropriately, appropriately and safely located in or near the wetlands. So that's our criteria 1 and 2. Kind of, that's what we're supposed to be looking at. That's where our focus should be. And, again, we don't have any type of wetland delineation for this. We're going off a 2005 plan. That, I'm not comfortable, me personally, with that. And then... So we're putting a garage in there. And one of the things that we need to be mindful is of prohibited use in the wetlands conservation district is the storage of petroleum products, paints, household chemicals, and similar environmentally dangerous materials. Typically, not saying it's going to happen. That's something for the board to consider when you're thinking about putting a garage into the overlay of the conservation district. You're not supposed to be composting yard, gardening or kitchen races, parking or storage of motor vehicles. I mean, technically, that may require another variance because you have a prohibited use now. Parking of storage of motor vehicles or other petroleum-powered equipment, including but not limited to boats, cars, trucks, automobiles, all-terrain and yacht equipment. The storage of pesticides, the use of storage of pericides, fertilizers, manure or pool chemicals. Construction, placement, and maintenance of any permanent or temporary structures, including but not limited to... So, yeah. So I got all those concerns, and then I have... So with that, I'm going to, I personally will struggle with 1 and 2. 3, which is the substantial justice. I do think that the town has a duty to protect the wetlands. So I think the gain to the public may or may not be outweighed to any loss to the applicant for not allowing them to do that. And values of surrounding properties, we don't have anything either way. So there's not much there. And the uniqueness of the property, I didn't hear too much on that. So, those are my concerns. Any thoughts to that, or?
Um, yeah. So because of the encroaching on the 75-foot setback, it's there for a reason. And so, I didn't want to all that detail, but, you know, that's, all of that is, um, why I'm, you know, leaning against it. And we have the 75-foot setback for a reason. And if it was pure, if there was some unique aspect that I thought that made this, you know, a reason why we should do it, I don't see a compelling one at the moment.
I think the unique aspect, aspect of this property is how much of it is taken up by the wetlands for the buffer. That would be the unique nature of this property. I think you raised good points.
I mean, that's for one criteria, but we have the four other criteria.
No, I, no, I understand. I'd have more of an issue with the shed than the garage, but...
Well, the shed should not be there.
No, I know. That's why I said I'd have more of an issue with that, because that's inside the 50. But that's not what we're being asked about right now either, so.
You made good points. Absolutely. I, I think the diagram being 2005, I'm less concerned. And you're correct that it does ebb and flow, and probably ebbs more than, or flows more than ebbs. I get those backwards. But, um, I mean, that's what we have. So it's, based on that, we are, we're looking at the variance as forth, correct?
No. We're looking?
At an estimate?
Well, well, that's the problem. We don't know what we're looking at. So we're looking at a 2005 representation of the wetlands as of 2005. So the weight and credibility we want to give to that can be what we think is proper. That's our discretion. I think it's, you know, I, I have a problem with using a 2005 wetland delineation.
It's not fresh enough.
I mean, that's, that's 20 years ago.
A lot could happen in 20 years.
But that's what we have, that's what they present. Doesn't mean we have to say that this is it. This is exactly how it exists. Because this isn't something that they did themselves. They just took this from the registry and kind of, you know, make this, I think. I think, and I, I might be misspeaking that, yet, well, it still says two thousand and five, so I'm not seeing anything more up to date than two thousand and five. And our ordinance does provide that the wetland shall be delineated by a wetland scientist, and we don't have that.
Ah.
But we're going based off of the delineation in two thousand and five, right, which you would assume was done by a wetland scientist.
I, I, I think we can assume that, absolutely, yep. Again, we're assuming that, I don't have the whole plan in front of me, so I, but we can make whatever assumptions we want. But typically, when we've had other, I know a lot of, the two of you are new, but when we've had people come in for wetlands, they've come in with a wetland scientist. And they've had somebody saying, look, this is the wetlands, this is what they are, this is, you know, how they exist, and we don't have that here. I mean, twelve point, twelve oh two point, twelve oh two point zero zero, wetland shall be determined. It actually does, it shall be determined by using field indicators for identifying hydroic soils in New England, New England interstate water pollution control in the corps of engineers. It does not say wetland scientist, so I will stand corrected. I'm typically in the state a soil scientist or a wetland scientist, actually, the thing here says, well, when they're incorrectly delineated, they're relying on a certified wetland scientist. So you basically have two folks in the state of New Hampshire that can delineate wetlands for the purposes of a project like this. Other thoughts, what they wanna do, what they're inclined to do?
I try to convince you otherwise if it wasn't two separate times with a garage and the EDU.
Anybody wanna make, I have a motion I could make, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to make a motion, or? Leave it to me?
You can make your motion.
I am going to, I'm gonna throw my phone, cause I have the case number on here. I am going to make a motion in case number two zero two five dash zero five dash one seven. To deny the application for a variance from LZO article one two zero seven, lot requirements one two zero seven point oh two. To allow a building within the seventy-five foot setback as the applicant has failed to meet, um, the five criteria. As established for the reasons discussed. Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'll oppose.
So, so you're, okay, so we have three ayes, oppose. So unfortunately, do not pass. So you have, um, so it was a three to one vote, you have the option of coming back to the board for a rehearing request. Um, you have the option of filing for a different variance for the setback going on the other side, um, you may wanna consider that and move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
I heard you, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I heard you talking about a wetland scientist. If we were to come back for rehearing, it sounds like it would be beneficial to have that person come out and give their evaluation of the property? Did I understand that discussion point correctly?
The concern is there was no up-to-date.
Yeah.
Wetland, um, stuff that was given to us. So if you had a wetland scientist.
Yeah.
What he's going to, I'm assuming, well, well, what let, wetland scientists do in general, is they're gonna delineate the wetlands and say where the, the boundaries are. So if you do that on your own and the wetland shrunk.
Right.
Then you would go back to that and you would, and if it's, the structure's not in the wetlands, then you don't need the variance.
Okay.
But if he comes back and he says it's, you know, even larger, well, that's gonna be problematic for you, because now even more of the structure would be in the setback.
Sure, yeah, I understand that. In order to come back for rehearing, what information would be beneficial to change your vote?
So, uh, so what's gonna happen is you have a denial now, and the process would be for you to file with the board a motion for a rehearing? And that's gonna be where you say, based on the presentation tonight, um, how the board heard or how they missed, made a mistake, or they didn't apply the law the right way. You would do that, and then that would be it, so if you have new information. That wasn't available at the time of the hearing or addresses some of the stuff that we had, then you would file a new variance application.
Okay.
So the rehearing request acts as an appeal?
Yeah.
So you're just coming back to us, basically saying, hey, guys, you misunderstood, uh, the law as it relates to the wetlands, you need to correct your mistake, or something like where we made a mistake.
That would be the only purpose of the rehearing.
That's the only purpose of the rehearing.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, great, nice.
Thank you. Alright, so that is that. Communications and other business, anybody have anything? I don't know if you folks are members of the NHMA, they having a, um, on the town, if you can sign up through the town, they are having ZBA training, I think, June ninth or sixteenth. Like from twelve to two or something like that, I think you can attend via Zoom. Do you, are you set up with the NHMA portal, do you have an account?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll send you that information. Um, I find those things to be extremely beneficial and very helpful.
New training, that's awesome.
Yep, so there's that, um.
When did you say it would be?
I think it's the sixteenth or the ninth, I'll, I'll find out and I'll make sure you, I get that to you.
On Monday?
I don't, don't call me, but it's sometime in there.
It would have to be late.
No, it's during the day.
It would have to be late.
Oh, it would have to be. So that, I'll make a note to send that off, if anybody wants to go, we can, uh, do that. And then I've been asked about this, is the zoning changes happening at the state level? We as a board don't, uh, comment on those changes if the town had a position. It's my position as chair of the board that the board of selectmen should reach out and make their, the town's position known as far as the zoning changes, cause there's quite a few of them. When they do happen, or if they happen, um, we, we don't do anything, um, it's gonna go, part of the planning board's process is to update the zoning based on new changes in state legislation. So all of that will be completely out of our control, so people are asking, and I have been asked, that's not anything that we deal with. We don't make zoning changes, we just enforce the zoning ordinance as it is, so none of that applies to us, and again, if the town wants to take a position, I believe that position, um, should come from the board of selectmen as a town position. Individually, if you folks have your own position, you wanna reach out to anybody at the state house regarding that, that you can do freely on your own. But as far as the board goes, we're not making a position, we're not taking a statement, we're leaving that to, um, the board of selectmen if they even choose to do so. And before we close, I, might Matt to come up, cause I don't think people have seen you on camera. They have seen you, okay? Alright, so can you, cause this is the first time, I know you may have been to one of the meetings, can you just introduce yourself to the board and just give us a little bit of a background? If you could come, I think we need to hear you too. And I know you're trying to resist being up here.
Yeah, I try to stay non-biased, cause that's my job.
No, absolutely, no, I appreciate that.
So my name is Matt Osborne, I'm the new town inspector, ran my own plumbing company for a while, um, worked over at BAE, bring a lot of construction knowledge. That's about it.
And when did you start that?
March, so we're like two and a half months in roughly.
And you're still employed?
I'm still here, still here, I guess that's a good sign.
Yeah, how's it going so far?
It's good, it's good, yeah.
Anything you didn't expect?
No, no, it's all, running my own thing, it's, you know, pretty much the same, I'm just on the other side of it now.
You're welcome, and, uh, thank you very much. We did get the new books, so I don't know if anybody, those red books.
No.
If you want one, did you get one?
I think I did, yeah.
So they're in our box over there. Oh, we have the meeting minutes, they don't, were you here for March? So we'll wait for one more, do you mind waiting?
No, no problem.
So we'll postpone approving the March seventeenth meeting minutes, because the two of us were not present, well, I was present, but I, I, I recused myself. We're not gonna do that, uh.
I'm not sure if I need to, I don't know, March seventeenth?
Yeah, that was. That was for the extension request for, um, the new gas station, the.
Oh, I did, I was there, yes, I definitely was there, thank you for reminding me between that.
Well, Steve actually reminded me, so.
Well, they had to extend.
Where are the minutes in the portal, cause I don't see them?
I don't know.
They're on the county website, and I emailed them to you on March nineteenth at eight AM.
There you go.
Alright, anything else? No? If anybody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, at seven thirty-nine, uh, anybody wanna second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, meeting is adjourned at, well, actually, that's seven thirty-nine, but it's really seven forty-two, seven forty-two. Alright, thanks.